Okay, okay. I'm recording this. Thank you, Pasa Calixco. Welcome back to the podcast. Like always, before we begin, I want to thank a couple of people. I want to thank my friends here at Calixco Brewing Company for giving me the space today to record this episode. Uh, when also want to send a shout out to my friend Eddie Lopez from uh Roots Creative and I think he calls um um. Um, I don't remember what the other name he asked for his company, but they're putting on an event next Saturday um for Dia de los Muertos. I'm going to put a link to his Instagram page so that you can um follow it and make sure you you know, see any updates for the event that's coming up. Um, but today my guest is somebody that's been on the podcast before. He's been on twice. This is his third time. Um, before the last time he was here, I think it was March, right before the pandemic, March twenty nineteen. Back then, he was the mayor of the city of Calixco, um part of the council. I think he was on his second term. Um, now he's back as a candidate for the city council for city of Calixco. My guest today is Mr. Bill Hodge. Thank you for being here today.
Well, thank you, Jose.
Um, before we get into, you know, your campaign, um while you're running all these things, um tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay, so some people that don't know me will get a sense of who I am. Sure. Well, uh, believe it or not, nobody believes me, but I'm I'm proud to say I'm half Mexican and Irish. Yeah, my mother worked in factories all her life, so I come from a solid working class background, not middle class, but working class. And that there's a difference there and it gives you a different worldview. Uh, I originally from Los Angeles, but I came to to first Mejicali for two years. And then in ninety-four, I moved to Calixco and I got a position in special ed and I was a teacher for twenty-six years. Moved over to mainstream and taught government in the social science department and US history. And then because of a theatrical background I had, I had tried to be a professional actor for about ten years. Had a little bit of success, not much. And uh, so they gave me an elective uh drama. And uh, it's interesting. Uh, I taught like four history classes, but people remember me more for the drama class and that was only one. So go figure on that. And then in twenty-ten, I was at Starbucks here in Calixco. And a couple of quote unquote important people of the community came in and they were important. One was on the city council and I overheard their conversation. It was an election year. And uh, I don't know, something just inspired me. I I listened to them and what they talked about, the issues and sometimes you can be very bold if you're naive. You don't know what you're getting into. And I just said, you know, I want to give, I want to serve and I can do that. And so I uh, I announced my candidacy in twenty-ten. A lot of people didn't think I was going to win and I did win barely, but I won. And uh, that was four years of of learning and and hard work. And then I lost the next election, but in twenty-sixteen, I uh, I won again. So I've been a councilman for over eight years and mayor for two years. And I think that that's one of the things that separates me apart from the other candidates, that I have experience and proven leadership. And so here I am again, trying to uh, to do the right thing and hopefully I will be elected and serve on the city council.
Um, even even after you, you know, you didn't win in twenty, was it twenty-twenty when you ran again?
Yes, did not win.
Um, you know, you you still been, you know, involved in in in, you know,
Yes.
The government because you were part of the planning commission.
Yes, I was the chairman for over a year and we worked together and it was a pleasure. I really enjoyed being on that. And uh, that the planning commission opened my eyes to how slow in many respects economic development is in Calixco. And I'll get to that a little later based on your questions, but it was a good experience, an eye opener.
Yeah, yeah. And because that was your first time in a commission, like a commission for the city.
It was the first time.
Okay. Um, you know, I saw you a couple of days before, um, you know, the deadline to submit your papers and I had asked you.
I know.
And you told me you weren't and then somebody else told me like, no, he is. I'm like, we just, I just saw him.
I just talked to him.
I saw him yesterday. He said, no. So what, you know,
What happened?
What changed? What? Yeah.
Uh, the deadline was the twelfth of August, a Friday. And on Thursday morning, a former council member and a friend of mine called me. And he said, look, there's only five candidates. We have two positions. I had not thought about uh, this time running for city council. I had my sights on uh, school board. As a teacher, I wanted to see if I could make a positive difference. But I was told that there were, if I wanted to continue the sub, which I do, that it would be a conflict of interest. So I respected that. So he told me, no, Hodge, get your papers and you can do it. And so I thought about it, but I didn't think about it very much. I guess it was an appeal to my ego. And uh, I said, okay, I'm gonna do it. What do I have to lose? And uh, so I put my, I got the signatures and I put, got them in by Friday by five o'clock and and so now I'm running, I'm campaigning.
So it was just somebody told you, you know, the the odds are.
Encouraged me and that was it. So.
So you know, you know, you've, you know, you've run a couple of times before. Um, you know what it is to be, you know, you know, the the spotlight you get because
Right.
Um, and sometimes it's, 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 I don't know, it's it it, you know, you're going into the lion's den because, you know, people.
Yes.
Um, you know, why?
Why?
Why do you still feel that that need to, you know, be part of the, you know, this?
Because you're not, you need to learn that not everyone is going to agree or even like you. And that doesn't matter. What matters is if you know what you want to do and what you believe in and what your convictions are, then you stick to them. And I have a broad perspective. I mean, I want to help everyone in the community. But I believe right now there are certain sectors in the community that are being neglected. And uh, so I would like to focus on them a little more, like the working and middle class families that struggle very much in Calixco to make ends meet. And uh, so if you know who you are and what you believe in, you won't let criticism get in the way. It it's, they can get to you, but you you just have to know what you believe in and just move forward. That's all.
Yeah, and because when I I think that there was a a big change, um, I think that was in twenty-twenty. Um, I think when when the pandemic happened, um, I think a lot of uh, our younger population, you know, was back home because schools were shutting down. So people, students that were out and, you know, away for college.
Right.
Were coming back home. Um, and there was a big change when it came to, um, you know, more, you know, a younger, a younger generation getting involved.
And that's good. That's very good. I was pleased that that was happening. And uh, because we need the young people to get involved. The stakes are very high for the generations to come here locally and statewide and nationally, politically and economically. And they're going to have a lot of challenges. So they need to have, they need to have that consciousness as to what's going on and how it's going to impact them and their families. So it is a good thing, very good thing that they that they got involved. Yes.
You know, in this, in this gap that you've had, you know, where you're not, um, you know, in the council, um, what have, you talk about, you know, some of the things that are being neglected. What's on the top of your list as to bring to the spotlight?
At, at seventy years old now, and I consider myself, I know people find this humorous, but uh, a young old candidate at the same time. Uh, young in energy and and vision and spirit, old in knowledge and experience. And uh, I am just no longer have the the character or personality put up with a lot of BS that that happens in city hall or or in politics. Uh, I think it's just important that you focus on what the issues are and what the, what the truth is. And and you you do your your best to make positive changes. We, Calixco, which I love, the city I love, I really do. But let's be honest, to me, and I and I think I'm hitting a nerve with a lot of people in the community. Calixco is a mess. It has a lot of problems. And I mean, various problems, but it's gotten overall dirty. Uh, unkept areas and in some respects, it's deteriorating. And so as a citizen recently, I just said, I I have to try to do something to help change that. And that's why I'm running again. But so many merit of problems, but one of the biggest problems I realized, I've changed in this sense, that I realized that uh, stops us from progressing, moving forward faster than that we should, we should be doing is city hall itself. I think it's time that we take a hard, close examination of what's going on in city hall. At times, the administration is incompetent, disorganized. And it's not meeting the needs of the citizens. Very little positive changes happened over the last twenty years. We're not so much moving forward as we are staying stagnant. And in some cases, losing businesses and moving backward. And so that I'm just going to tell it how I feel and how I see it. And that's how I see it. And I and I know many of the citizens are upset about their community. So one of the biggest issues that I want to do, work with other council members, city manager and staff, is to take steps to reform city hall. Now, what am I talking about? There's an area that based on my observations and experience in city hall, I did not observe very much. And it was this, that there are valuable tools and resources that city hall doesn't seem to be using in a systematic or consistent way. What am I talking about? Well, I don't think we have a a master plan. Uh, we are, we are not even conducting economic assessments in the community. We're not even doing, stepping up and doing long-term goals, which everybody in every department should know what they are, should be on the same page and we should be working towards them. And there are many other areas uh, that Calixco is not as efficient as some of our neighboring cities. So that's one area that I want to focus on that's different this time for me. Of course, the regular problems and and reforming city hall will be a positive thing. It has a direct link to economic development and raising overall the quality of life for all citizens. So I think that that's very important to reform city hall. Like, not, I mean, very little has changed. Calixco, downtown Calixco is a disaster. Uh, what else?
But how do you, you know, how much of, you know, this, you know, um, you know, uh, reform or or because to me, when I, when you, all these issues you're talking about, a lot of them to me seems to be an issue with um, turnaround, you know, we have city managers that come in and out.
That's
We have directors that come in and out.
That's part of the reform.
Our, our, our maintenance or or, you know, the the workforce is, there's not, it's not there.
Um, yes, that's the problem. And that's what I mean in in areas of reform. Uh, one area, I think Calixco city hall needs to understand that I think that businesses understand very well, that it takes money to make money or to invest money to to reap a profit or a reward. And we, I don't think we've set our priorities right. I think one of the greatest needs that our city needs to do to bite the bullet, to to work together and find some way to get it done is to do things in city hall that we know in a while will definitely generate revenue for the city. When I was in city council, I kept bringing up the importance of having a grant writer. Still don't have a designated grant writer. Department heads are doing it, but they're understaffed and they're overworked. And that's another area that we need to do. We need to properly staff all the departments, especially the police and fire department. I mean, there are times which is frightening that we've had only two officers patrolling the whole city of forty-one thousand people in Calixco. That's dangerous to them and to the citizens. So.
But um, you know, it's, it's, it's easier said than done.
Yes, it is. It's easier said than done.
How do we, how do we get there? How do we, you know, manage to? Because, yeah, you know, I agree with everything you're saying, you know, being in the planning commission, I feel that um, it's a, that's one of the most important uh, departments because you invest in the department, you staff it, that's going to create revenue for you with tax revenue, you know, but at the end of the day, like, how are, where are we going to get the money to, you know?
Well, we have to prioritize and we have to bite the bullet in certain other areas to understand that what we do, what we focus on will generate revenue. Uh, for instance, both on the planning commission, Ms. Lisa Tyndall terribly overburdened and overworked. I think she's wearing three hats in the department because quote unquote, the city can't afford to hire anyone. But if we hired other people, that would relieve the workload and that would make the operation more efficient and we wouldn't be backed up so much with uh, projects that had been waiting in the wings for many months or even years. And and so everything has a ripple effect or a cause and effect. If we were to hire more police officers, that would allow them to be more effective in their policing. They would be able to properly address burglaries and small businesses. They would be able to properly address the homeless situation or better. And protect homeowners' property. I mean, these, it it's like that, you, but we have to find a way. I don't have a definite answer, but we have to find a way to prioritize and know what generates revenue. One of the areas that generates revenue, and I know people don't like him coming around, but it's cold enforcers, enforcement. And they're down. I think they only have one or maybe two. We need more. Another area that stimulates and galvanizes economic development is city planning engineers. We only have one. Other cities that are prospering and developing at a faster rate have two or three. So we're understaffed, which does not allow us to properly serve the community. And things just get worse.
Yeah, and and also, you know, hold us back from growing because
That's right.
If we can't serve the community we have now, what?
How are we going to?
Yeah, serve.
In the future.
Yeah. Um, hey guys, sorry for the interruption. We talked about, you know, younger generations, you know, you know, getting involved. Camilo, Jake, Eric Cortega. I want to thank Eddie Lopez from Roots Creative. You know. Mr. Norma Cera Lino, IID Director, Representing Division Five. You mentioned experience. We have experience. But at the same time, younger generations mentioned. Sports for sports. We always have the same people running. Stalkos and hot dogs. With eight years of experience serving Imperial. How do you? San Diego Yama Counties with Mexican style hot dogs and taguisas. Contact Sergio at seven six zero five six two zero zero fifty-seven or look for Sergio.
I should be running again and elect me?
I want to thank Eric Reyes from Los Amigos de la Comunidad.
That's a legitimate question and concern.
Finally, I want to thank David Gasalem. If you're thinking of buying or selling a home in Imperial or San Diego Counties, make sure you contact David. He's not only a Realtor, but an investor with over twenty years of experience. And he'll teach you along the way in one of the most important investments of your life. Um, contact David at seven six zero two three five nine five seven six or look for David Gasalem on Facebook. All right, guys, we're now back to the show. Um, you know, we talked, we talked about earlier about, you know, younger generations, you know, you know, getting involved. Uh, right. Some of them are running for city council. Um, you know, you, um, earlier you mentioned experience, you mentioned experience, you have experience. But at the same time, um, you know, younger generations mention, we always have the same people running. Um, you know, how does, how do you convince somebody that's
Well.
That it's, you know, or or or, how do you, you know, validate?
I should be running again and elect me?
Or or other people that, you know.
That's a legitimate question and concern. All I can say is at my age now, and as I have come to fruition in many things, I have realized more uh, about, well, about one of the major deficits in our city has been reform in city hall. And I don't think it's a good idea to have only young and inexperienced council members on the council. I think the voters need me uh, because of my experience in leadership, so that we can work together and and move forward. But uh, I have just changed. I had an epiphany realizing, if I can use that word, epiphany, uh, realizing that a major obstacle to development is reef, is to reform city hall, to take steps to do that in many different aspects. And uh, because I think also a subculture has developed in city hall where some have become very complacent and indifferent to the needs of the community. Like for instance, I'll tell it like it is, I don't think Calixco is very business friendly.
Hmm.
Unlike other cities.
I mean, it's, it's, I think I mentioned it as well and it's something that, you know, it's people, uh, people that I've interviewed that has, are small business owners or or know somebody.
I, I s, I feel their frustration. I've, some have told me that they just get the runaround. Or there's no tight process or system in place that come on back in two weeks, we'll have your permit. They come back, it's not ready. Well, when will it be ready? Oh, come back in about another two weeks, we'll see. That's kind of wishy-washy approach to business. Time is money for businesses.
Yeah, and at the same time.
We need to change that culture.
Yeah, at the same time, they create money for the cities.
That's right. Growth and money. And and part of that changing the culture and answer to how are we going to change things is we need to hire more qualified people. We need to be fully staffed and training should be a priority. And I, and I want the public, the citizens to understand that it starts at city hall. And if we get our house in order and evaluate on a constant basis how we're doing for the community, it will have a positive impact for the citizens. The quality of life for them will be raised.
You know, you've been on the council for, you know, two terms already.
Right.
Um, you mentioned, you mentioned uh, people getting complacent with, you know, their jobs and and
Right.
Does, does somebody that's already a city council get complacent? Do they um, hear the complaints from the city or the community? And since they're already up there, do they feel like, you know what, I'm already here, you know?
And and let me be honest. Uh, I think that I've always been a pretty good councilman. But there's always room for growth and improvement. And I think I have improved now because I have done some soul searching. Now, one thing that I did a little too much that I shouldn't have done. And that was to just believe what administration or city manager has to say at face value. And I, people may not understand this, but a councilman has to be very aware of what they want and remember that they were elected by the people. Cause it can be easy to get sucked into the culture and values and perspectives of of uh, city hall. And I, like, I started looking at the agenda and I said, let's have a criteria here. Was, what items on here are going to directly or even indirectly help the community? Help the people of Calixco. And many, many items on the agenda have nothing directly to do to help the people. It's just helping administration, a sense of self-preservation. And uh, and so that has to change. We need to be aware we're elected and we're working for the people. And and don't get me wrong, there are some very many wonderful, dedicated and hardworking people as staff in city hall. But I just think it's a systemic problem and a, a cultural problem that needs to be addressed.
And and um, you know, lately, our city council has, you know, been a little bit more calm, you know, we haven't been on Ivy press as much.
Yeah, we haven't had so much drama.
Um, you, you know, you've been on 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 part of the, part of the council where, you know, there was drama.
There's a lot of drama.
Um, what do you, you know, what do you, what are your thoughts on on that? What do you think when, you know, you see?
Well, I'm, I'm not going to be too critical, but I think at the beginning, this new council that, well, uh, I think the last four years that I served, we were pretty unanimous in unison, not bickering so much. Uh, but that tends to be a a trade of Calixco City Council. But if I, if I re, if I understand right, this current council, they have their issues and they're divided. It's a three-two vote usually. One will will be the middle vote, but uh, yes, uh, what, what was your question?
Well, you know, what are your thoughts on, you know, a lot of times, Calixco City Council being the, I don't know, like being the part of the front page because something like drama that was.
Well, we need to operate on a higher professional level. And I think I did a very good job chairing the council meetings. Uh, because I understood that it's our business that we have to conduct. And uh, time is limited and it has to be efficient in an orderly manner. And yet we have to allow the public to have their voice. Uh, and uh, so I, I just think that we have to be more professional, not so petty in our politics. Uh, I, I did not agree with the mayor and and pro, pro cham mayor uh, passing over Camilo Garcia. Now, they had an argument and they were right, that legally they could do it, but I just thought it was petty. Uh, you shouldn't be passing somebody over because they have a difference of political perspective. Not, Camilo deserved to be mayor.
Hmm, I think what, the biggest, well, one of the reasons why they skipped him, one of the council members said, because he was in uh, he was in, he was in, um, bringing items to the agenda.
Okay.
Do you think, or what, what, do you think uh, that's um?
That could be, but I, in my That could be, but in my experience and observations, I, I saw Camilo bring items. I didn't agree with everything he brought forward, but I think he did. I just think it was, I just think at that moment, it was petty politics.
Because i- in reality, you know, the, the passing on of, you know, the mayorship to whoever is the pro-cham, i- in reality, it's kind of like a tradition, it's not something that
Yeah, it's not set in law or so.
So, so when it comes to down to traditions, you know, how, how important are they, you know, to, you know, when it comes to being part of a city council? Like, is it important for you to be, be, follow tradition?
Not all the time, but I think that in all fairness, if you're an effective councilman and you care and you're doing your job, I think you have a right to have a turn as being mayor. And let's be honest, it's, it's, I mean, some people will try to make it out more than what it is, but it's, a mayor is just as equal and only equal to the other city councilmen in power. It's more symbolic. But if you're a good mayor, you'll want to try to lead and take a leadership role. But I don't know, but I, I think that a lot of people in the community, they like the old ways, the traditional ways of Callexico. And as a candidate, I am not, I am not one that wants to radically change things, I just want to improve upon things. For instance, there is a young candidate that's running, and he's made a proposal to put traders downtown Callexico for the homeless. I just disagree with that respectfully. I just think that that will kill businesses and change the, the character of downtown. It's deteriorating, but it can be saved if we hold it as a priority. So, sometimes, young people might have a little too many radical ideas, I don't know.
Yeah, and, and, you know, that's, that's, that's another, you know, one of the, the things that I wanted to ask you, you know, you've been in the council, like I said earlier, two terms, eight years. And, and, you know, in, in your experience, you know, how important were, you know, these kinds of social issues? You know, homelessness is a
Oh, it's very important.
It's a, it, it's like a sensitive topic to a lot of people, but
Well, I support doing what we can to help the homeless and the farm workers, but here's where I think I might be different with the other, especially the young candidates. It appears that, that they tend to, to focus a little, a little more narrow in political scope, mainly in the homeless and the farm workers. Don't get me wrong, the welfare of them is very important, but I have a broader scope of concerns. Small businesses need to be paid attention to and helped, and working and middle-class families. Some of them are worried about the property values going down, because overall, Callexico is deteriorating. We, I think they've been neglected. We need to focus and help them just as much. So, we got a, we got a whole barrel full of problems, just a matter of picking one at each time and prioritizing them.
Do, do you see, do you, do you see the city council a place where, you know, social issues are something where, you know, a, a city council would deal with, or is it, you know, social issues a
I think that social issues are, are political and stem from economic problems, and I think that they are important, yes. I, I really do. Yeah, I, I agree with that. So, it, it has to be looked at in the sense of a political economy, which, which deals with social issues. But some social issues don't, aren't, aren't generated or sustained on a local level, they're more at the attention of a national or state level. And when you try to force those social issues on a local avenue, you're going to have some blowback on that.
Yeah, especially when you have a community that's, you know, roads aren't, you know, as nice as they used to.
Right.
Parks or, you know, other little things that
They make a difference. I mean, parks are, are still dirty. And here we go, reforming City Hall. If we hire more park maintenance people, then our parks will be properly addressed and, and cleaned. And if we hire a grant writer, we can get funding, hopefully, from state and federal level for new parks. I, I mean, I just don't think we're taking advantage of the different areas that we can generate revenue and economic development.
Yeah, yeah.
So
Um, you know, if, if, if you had to convince somebody that, if you had like a two-minute pitch to, to tell somebody, you know, what, a community member, what would your two-minute pitch be, you know, for your, you being the candidate?
I would say that you need me on the council, because I have experience and I have proven leadership and I care. I care about you and your, the welfare of your children, and I know that these are hard-working families that come home late and are tired, and they worry about making, paying their bills, they worry about their children's future. So, they need someone like me that really cares about their concerns, the people, not City Hall, and will work very, very hard to get things done for them, and hopefully to get results. Now, one councilman can't do it all, we need to be realistic, but you can take a leadership role, you can get people rolling in the right direction, and hopefully, the next council that comes in will continue to work on those things. So, I want them to vote for me, and I've changed. At my age, I don't want to put up with the BS any longer. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to hear "no" as an answer from City Hall when it comes to the concerns of the citizens. That's all I heard. Every time I had an idea, or, or want to go in a different direction, "No, we can't do that, Mr. Hodge, Councilman Hodge. No, we don't have the budget for it. No, no, no." Well, I'm not going to take "no" for an answer, not this time around.
And I'll ask you a question that Gil Revolar gave to me that I should, I should be asking, especially former council members. In your, in your career as a council member, do you have a decision you made that you kind of would want to kind of take back?
Kind of take back?
Or that, you know, sits on your mind, like, you know, I was a deciding vote, or, or I should have voted "no" on this, or against this, something like that?
Wow, that's a tough one, and I'm sure there's some, but one air, one contentious issue, but I, I made it good, finally, but I, I can't remember the circumstances, but you know, the, the tragic fire at Santa Tomas and the uproar of the people, rightfully so. And I think they were in their fury and pain, they were blinded in the sense of who wanted to really help them and who didn't help them. And I believe that I really stepped out for them and reached out to them, along with Morris Reisen. And when, and when the city management figures the issue was done with, Santa Tomas would no longer be, we continued to help, hold meetings with them. But I, well, now, that's, there was no voting on that one. The one that, the one that I at first regretted was, and here I got hoodwinked in a way, and that's how I've learned, I'm not going to have that happen to me anymore. Big, tough, glib, fast-talking city manager telling me that the restructuring of the water rates wouldn't hurt poor working people as much, it would be on an equitable basis. And I thought about it, yes, but I didn't do as much homework as I should have, and I voted okay on it first, but I can't remember why there came another round of voting, and that's, I was the only one to vote "no" against restructuring the water rate. So, I made it good for myself, but the first time I voted, yeah, I regretted that vote. I knew I had done wrong.
Yeah. Is there anything that you would like to pitch that I, I didn't, I didn't ask you, or?
Let me see. No, I just, I've changed. I'm a better councilman, I'm more conscientious and aware of what the problems are, and I am ready to fight like hell for the citizens, not City Hall. And, and I want them to vote for me, because I will represent them, and I will fight hard for them. And, yeah, that's it. So, please, vote for Bill Hodge on November eighth, and we will clean up the mess together in Callexico.
I know you're running your, you're pretty much a one-man show on your campaign.
Right.
If people want to reach out to you for help, to help you, to, to
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
To talk to you, where, where can they
I'm going door-to-door.
How can they reach you, or where can they
My email, billhodge1@gmail.com.
Okay.
They can email me, and I would appreciate that. Volunteers are, I would love to have people help me.
Yeah, and, and, and you know, even also, if they want to, you know, reach out to you to kind of talk to you and
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And see if we're
I'm here to listen to their concerns, because I'm not here for my ego on City Hall, I'm here for them, and part of that is to keenly listen to what they have to say, because I, you represent the people.
Yeah, yeah, the city of Callexico.
The citizens of Callexico.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Hodge, thank you again for, thank you for coming by. I really appreciate it.
I appreciate this opportunity.
All right, guys, well, thank you so much for listening or watching, and we'll see you guys in the next one.
All right, bye-bye.